Take a moment of silence, please. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali here. Vines.
Here.
Kowinski.
Here.
Salinas. Tyler.
Here.
He's way up there in the top, see him?
Oh, I see, thank you. Emerson.
Here.
Rakels.
Here.
Warple.
Here, let the record show, seven present, two absent, one by Zoom. Mayor?
Hi, everybody, nice to see you. I wanted to start off and say thanks. Last council meeting with the CoreWeave investment and all the ordinances we approved, I thought that was a real big deal, and I wanted to say thank you again. Obviously, we're still waiting on NIPSCA. Haven't really heard anything, but I do know that basically, on the CoreWeave deal, everything's been wrapped up outside of the NIPSCA issue, so thank you again. Also, over the past couple of weeks, I've stayed busy working across departments and in the community. Here's a summary of my recent activities. I attended our Hammond Police Department Monthly Captains Meeting, where we discussed crime statistics, emerging trends, and personnel matters. Visited the Hammond Firefighters and Firehouse Number Seven, meeting with the chiefs, captains, and the operating staff on Shift Three. It's always great to get FaceTime with our firefighters, and I'm looking forward to the day we replace that aging station with a brand-new station. We already know where the location is. We know what it looks like. We're in the process of designing it. The only thing we don't have is the money. So if you guys come up with an extra eight million or so, give me a call, and we'll figure out how to build that thing, but let's try to prioritize that. Met with the Parks Department staff working on this year's Festival of the Lakes Roadie Run 5K, a tradition held in honor of former Councilwoman Kathleen Pasalic. We even discussed the usual fun challenge of what time city employees need to beat me to earn a day off. We want to make this a big run, so a bigger run than it even is, so we're making it easier for the employees to beat me. They can beat me by either three, two, or one minutes, and that's a lot less than it used to be, so. We held a ribbon-cutting at the 219 Day Grounds on 169th and Woodmar, a great addition to the neighborhood. I want to thank Councilman Warple for being there. I think it's a great addition right across the street from the neighborhood where Dave lives. Conducted interviews for a department head opening. I'm sure most of you are aware that the Department of Code Enforcement has a vacancy in the department head position. I went through a process of interviewing about seven applicants for that job. We narrowed it down to three, and I imagine sometime this week we'll have a person selected to be the new department head for Code Enforcement. If you have any questions, I could talk to you after the meeting. I attended the kickoff for our Wolf Lake Pavilion Summer Concert Series over in the First District. The first night, Night One, featured a band called Secondhand News, a Fleetwood Mac tribute band from Chicago. Around 600 people came out that night. It was a little bit cold, but we still had 600 people there, and the music was spectacular. Then, a week later, which was just Saturday this week, it was about 1,000 degrees, complete different night and day. And it was a lot different with music, too. We had a band called Swift Nation, which is a Taylor Swift tribute band from Southern California. About 500 people came out that night with tons of kids. Like, I don't know, 40% of the audience was little kids, so really cool. This Saturday, coming up, Saturday, June 28th, we have High Rider, Indianapolis-based Grateful Dead tribute band, taking the stage at 7:00 PM. For the summer concert series, as always, there's free admission, there's free parking, there's BYOB, there's BYO drinks, BYO food, and we're actually adding food trucks to the menu this week. So we're going to have a couple of food trucks out there as well. So we're trying to grow the summer concert series. I encourage the council members, pick your band and meet us out there. Saturday nights, we're doing it. We didn't want to conflict with anything the township's doing or anything the City of Whiting's doing, so we picked Saturday night. It's a nice little niche we have going, so. See you guys out there. Participated in the 45th Annual Purdue-Northwest Golf Scramble at the Byron Ridge Country Club. Another hot one, but it was a great opportunity to catch up with the chancellor and the executive staff and to support my alma mater and one of Hammond's largest in players. We held a planning session on the future of the old YMCA on Southeastern. Met with, mostly internal, about some ideas that the old Y is coming up with, what they want to do with that location. So if any council people want to talk to me, I could sort of update them on what's going on there. I had a meeting with Councilman Al Salinas, Second District Councilman, discussing key issues and concerns from residents of the Second District. Thought it was a very productive meeting. Joined my executive team in meeting with members of the HASS School Board, keeping a close eye on that financial situation and how it may impact the city of Hammond. And finally, had a great meeting with Marty Dible of the Robertsdale Section of Hammond regarding the lighting situation at the steeple of the St. John Baptist Church, looking for ways that we could rectify this situation so that I don't get run out of town by the prayer group at St. John Baptist. So I think we can figure this out, though. In fact, Marty and I agreed that, I think, had the Board of Public Works been included in that, I'm saying this for Councilmen mostly, Councilman Mark's district, had the Board of Works been included in that in the first place, that was probably the right thing to do. And I asked them if they would submit a request to the Board of Public Works and Safety, and Marty thought that was reasonable. So they're going to submit a request, and I've already talked to the Board of Public Works and Safety, and we think that that's a good control mechanism. We were worried that if we didn't have a control mechanism like that, any business or church in the city of Hammond could do the same thing. So the control mechanism is the Board of Public Works and Safety. So that's my report for the last two weeks. Unless you have any questions, I want to thank you for allowing me this time. Councilman Dave?
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler?
Hi, Councilman.
Here. This is not a question, but just wanted to thank you, the Community Development Department and the committee for putting on another great Juneteenth event. I know I wasn't there personally, but saw a lot of posts, a lot of pictures, and heard a lot of great things about the event. So I just wanted to say thank you, congratulations for another wonderful event.
Councilman Berry, I appreciate you bringing that up, and thank you. The reason I didn't mention it in my report is I wasn't there either, and I have a legitimate excuse. An emergency came up in my family that I cannot talk about publicly, but it was a scary weekend. So I couldn't be there. Solid excuse for not being there, though. I do want to point that out. So I'm sure in time, we'll all learn what I'm talking about. But I appreciate Councilman Berry bringing that up. I know Awana and the staff at Community Development worked real hard. Special Events Team worked real hard putting the Juneteenth event together, and it was well-attended, as usual. So thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Berry.
Anybody else? Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, guys.
Item number six, approval of minutes.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Before we move on to minutes, I would like to suspend the rules to allow the Delta Institute to speak to us this evening.
Motion's been made to suspend the rules. Is there a second?
Second.
Clerk Golick, roll call. I mean, go ahead. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes. Motion's been made. Motion carries. Seven in favor, zero opposed. This is kind of my fault. I accidentally left them off the agenda, but you guys are free to approach the bench. Doesn't matter.
Good evening, Mayor McDermott, council members, and community members of Hammond. My name is Jamie Zouris. I am with the Delta Institute, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit based in Chicago, Illinois. We work with communities across the Midwest to enhance climate resilience through three program initiatives. One is Sustainability Support Services, Resilience Ag, and Nature-Based Climate Solutions, which is what this project I bring to you today is about. Together, partnering with the city and specifically Devon Wick, the Superintendent of Parks and Recreation, from now until the end of December 2026, we will be working in Hammond to create an urban forestry management plan, conduct tree inventories of the Second and Third District, including Harrison Park, remove ten hazardous trees to the community, and plant 200 new trees, all with the goals of improving urban forestry, revitalizing green spaces in Hammond, and specifically in underserved neighborhoods, enhance beauty and functionality, and build community resilience against extreme heat and flooding. We also are working robustly with community engagement, so we will be conducting a community working group, which I've already met with Councilman Berry about, and will be meeting over the course of the summer and the next year or so, so that we get community input to guide the forestry vision for the future of Hammond. We really want to make sure that the municipality is making informed decisions on tree care, removal, planting, and long-term planning, and we hope that you'll join us in supporting this effort. We're able to do this through partnerships such as with Davy Resource Group, a consultant that will be conducting tree inventory and writing the urban forestry management plan, and through our partnership with Indiana University's Environmental Resilience Institute, which I will let Zach, the fellow, speak more about in just a minute. And through this project, we will be, like I said, planting 200 new trees, removing ten hazardous trees, mitigating 34,000 gallons of stormwater runoff, sequestering 5,700 pounds of carbon, which is equivalent to not burning 3,000 pounds of coal annually, managing 15,000 acres of urban forest and involving 200-plus residents and stakeholders.
Yeah, I'm Zach Wienerberg. I grew up here in Hammond, right on Woodmar and 169th, where the ribbon-cutting just was. But yeah, so basically, I am in charge of the GIS, Geographic Information Systems, basically just prioritizing planting locations based on socio-demographics, impervious surfaces, distance to tree canopy, et cetera. So all summer, I'm basically creating a planting plan and then also doing community engagement, mostly in the Second and Third District. So, and I'm with the Environmental Resilience Institute of IU Bloomington.
Thanks so much for your support, and we promise we won't plan community engagements in conflict with your festival this summer.
Excuse me, I do have a question.
Yes.
What prompted you to focus on the Second and Third District?
Yes, those are districts that have been identified using census available data that show that those districts are the predominantly low-income and underserved areas. So they suffer from greater health effects and have lower incomes. Yep.
So it has nothing to do with the number of trees in each district?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Although, I will also add that those districts may have fewer trees than other districts based on previous socioeconomic factors.
Thank you.
Of course.
Any questions?
I will leave some business cards in case anyone wants to get in touch.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, Mr. President.
Ma'am, ma'am, ma'am. Councilman Tyler addressed you.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to the group. We did, as they mentioned, meet, and we took a walk around Harrison Park and identified some of those problem trees that Devon has been working hard to remove, as well as kind of a pattern to plant new trees as we begin the improvements to Harrison Park later on this year. So excited about that. And then I know the other thing that they're working on, which I just wanted to mention, is as they're doing their analysis of where trees are located across the Third District, identifying the areas of the district that are warmer based off little-to-no tree coverage. I think in recent years, there's been, I think, a lack of emphasis placed on replanting some of those removed trees, the problem trees that we've seen throughout the Third, and so excited to work with this group to identify where we should be planting new trees. And of course, like they mentioned, talking to community residents and other program partners that might be interested in being a part of this conversation, too. So excited about working with them, excited about working with our Parks Department, with Councilman Salinas, in trying to figure out how we can improve the overall quality of life from an environmental standpoint for districts across, for residents across the Third District. So thank you to the Delta group and looking forward to working with you all.
Thank you, Councilman.
Anyone else have a question or comment for them?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
I make a motion to return to the regular order of business?
I just, real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Since Devon's here, I kind of did it without any fanfare, but last November, around the time city employee Steve Fowler passed away, Devon contacted me about having an extra tree. And he asked me where to put it, and we put it in a spot where Fowler used to aggravate me all the time in Dowling Park. But what was it, a week or two ago? Yeah, he got a plaque made up and dedicated the tree to Steve.
How wonderful.
So every time I want to get aggravated and think about Steve, all I got to do is go look at that tree. But thank you, Devon, and I'll go ahead with you.
I'll renew my motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, a motion to go back to regular business. Do we need a roll call or can we just do voice vote?
Mr. President.
Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show. The motion carries seven in favor, two absent. Item number four, approval of minutes.
Mr. President?
Councilman Rakos.
Make a motion, and we approve the minutes, as submitted and placed on file.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing, no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying yea.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Item number five, approval of claims.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, I move for approval of claims, beginning with claims dated June 4th, 2025, and ending with claims dated June 18th, 2025, claim number 4891 through claim number 5349 inclusive in the amount of $12,917,970.46. I so move.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakels.
Yes.
Warple.
Yes, let the record show. The motion carries seven in favor, zero opposed, with two absent. Item number six, public hearings. Clerk Golick, can we take all three of these at the same time?
Yes. Item A, Ordinance 25-12, an ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number 8514, which is an ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond, including the regulations and maps, to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, as amended, for property commonly known as the 600-177th Street and 626-177th Street, sponsored by Bill Emerson and Dan Spitali. Item B, an ordinance to appropriate funds from the operating balance for the Hammond Park Department, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines. Item C, an ordinance to appropriate funds in the Hotel Motel Innkeeper's Tax Fund for the Hammond Park Department, sponsored by Councilwoman Vines.
Does anybody wish to speak on any of these three issues? Does anybody wish? State your name and address, please.
Anthony Hicks, former councilman in the Third District in the city of Hammond, precinct commitment man for over 31 years. I just need some clarity as to, specifically on the reference number 2512. How does it affect the growth within the city of Hammond?
Does anybody else wish to speak? Does anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else wish to speak? Hearing none, public hearings are closed. Item number seven, communications.
Mr. President?
Councilman Rakos.
Yes, I'd like to announce that the picnic in the park with the Hammond PD is, will happen on Tuesday, July 8th, from 12:00 to 2:00 PM in Hessville Park. Hammond Police excited to invite you and your family to Hessville Park Splash Pad, located at 173rd and Kennedy. Bring the whole family for the community fund and great company. Free food, free games, and meet and greet with the Hammond Police officers.
Anybody else have any communications?
Mr. President?
Councilman Tyler.
Thank you. I just want to announce that this Saturday, June 28th, I'll be sponsoring a basketball session with free skills training and free skills competition at the Hammond Sportsplex. Registration is at 8:30, and the skills training begins at 9:00 AM from 9:00 to 12:00. It's for boys and girls ages 7 through 18, and then the skills competition, there'll be three-on-three, one-on-one from 1:00 to 3:00 PM, and that's for boys and girls ages 11 to 18. And this is in partnership with the McCoy family in honor of Teyon McCoy. So really excited about, I think this is the either third or fourth year that we're putting on this tournament and the skills training for our youth, and excited to continue to use the Sportsplex and that great facility. So just wanted to, once again, announce this Saturday, June 28th, from about 8:30 to about 4:30 PM, we'll be there for free skills training and then a free skills competition for kids ages 7 through 18. They'll get a free t-shirt, and then, of course, they'll be fed during our time there as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the communications? Are there any other communications? Hearing none, communications are closed. Item number nine, committee reports. Item number eight, committee reports.
Mr. President?
Councilman Emerson.
We will be bringing out 25-12 for third and final reading.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, council as a whole will be bringing out 2513 and 2514.
You may continue. Is that it, or you got to report first?
Oh, yeah. I wasn't.
I said you may continue.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vines.
Alrighty. As usual, I would like to announce the upcoming community and crime watch meetings. This being summer, and the crime watch groups mostly utilize the schools for their meetings. So school is closed, so we're not having as many meetings. But we do have a meeting on Wednesday, Community Watch at Mount Zion Pleasant View Plaza, 940 Kenwood, at 1:00 PM. Plaza, uh, 940 Kenwood at 1:00 PM. Uh, that is, uh, as I said, Wednesday, June 25th. Uh, the next meeting of the Whiting-Robertsdale Crime Watch will be Thursday, July 10th, 6:30 PM at Calumet College. And as usual, I urge everyone to come out, excuse me, and find out about what's going on in your neighborhood, because community is not just about me, it's about us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Does anybody else have anything on the committee reports? Committee reports are now closed. Item number 10, introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance 25-12 sponsored by Councilman Emerson and Spitali, and ordinance reclassifying certain lands in the city of Hammond for zoning purposes and amending ordinance number 8514, which is an ordinance establishing a zoning plan for the city of Hammond, including the regulations and maps, to administer the zoning plan in order to provide for orderly growth and development within the city, all in accordance with the comprehensive land use plan as amended for property commonly known as 600-177th Street and 626-177th Street.
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Uh, I move, uh, to pass 2512, dash 12, uh, from C1 to C4, uh, in the zoning, just, thank you, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilman Emerson to pass on third and final reading, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing, none. Clerk Golick, roll call on the motion.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Orpul.
Yes, let the record show, the motion carries seven, zero, with two absent.
Ordinance 25-13 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance to appropriate funds from the operating balance for the Hammond Park Department.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2513.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, this appropriates, uh, 57, uh, 577,830.53 from the operating balance to, um, a host of different events. Uh, there's 219 Day, there's the Holiday Parade, uh, Veterans Day Parade, um, Hessville Soccer Complex, Cinco de Mayo, uh, eh, and these are the special events that the city offers to the residents of the city of Hammond.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Orpul.
Yes, let the record show, the motion carries seven in favor, two absent.
Ordinance number 25-14 sponsored by Councilwoman Vines, and ordinance to appropriate funds in the Hotel Motel Innkeepers Tax Fund for the Hammond Park Department.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
I move for final passage of 2514.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilwoman Vines, seconded by Councilman Spitali. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Vines.
Yes, this is appropriating $20,897.92 from the, uh, operating balance of Innkeepers Tax to the Hotel Motel Fund, uh, in that same amount, and that, once again, is used for, um, uh, event advertising.
Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing, none. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Orpul.
Yes, let the record show, seven in favor, zero opposed, with two absent.
President Orpul, that concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 10, introduction of ordinances. There are none. Item number 11, resolutions.
Item A, a resolution, uh, a 25-R-17 sponsored by Councilman Salinas in the second district, a resolution of the common council of the city of Hammond, Indiana, granting a waiver of non-compliance to Indiana Code 6-1.1-12.1-11.3 with respect to an assessed valuation deduction, a tax abatement, for the tangible real property of Park 24 Hammond LLC.
Mr. President.
Councilman Rakos.
We make the motion, we approve 24-R-17, 25-R-17, I'm sorry.
Motion's been made by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilman Emerson. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Councilman, Councilwoman Vines.
Uh, do we have to have a public hearing on this? Um, uh, it's on the agenda for July 14th?
Um, it does state, "Public hearing on July 14th, 2025." Yes, we do.
I'd like to amend my motion, include the public hearing for 24th, for July 14th, right?
Yes. Second.
Motion's been made with the public hearing by Councilman Rakos, seconded by Councilwoman Vines. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Hearing, none. Clerk Golick, roll call.
Alexander. Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas. Tyler.
Yes.
Emerson.
Yes.
Rakos.
Yes.
Orpul.
Yes, let the record show, the motion carries seven in favor, zero opposed, with two absent.
President Orpul, that concludes the reading of the resolutions.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Item number 12, new and unfinished business. The intent to consider goes away. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Emerson.
Uh, I would like to mention, uh, on 6/11/25, from 12 to 2, we had a pop-up picnic where we met, uh, police officers at Edison's Park. Uh, the tune-up, the turnout was great. Uh, we visited the police officers and got to know them. Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And, I believe, let me look at the date, there's one at Hessville Park coming up, Councilman Rakos?
July 8th, yes.
July 8th?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you. Those are always well-attended. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? I would like to, uh, bring one thing up. Starting last Thursday, Purdue Northwest, somehow in the title it got Calumet Campus, but Purdue Northwest had a baseball tournament that was called the College Showcase, where teams from all over the area, including Illinois, competed at different college baseball fields. I know one of the places was Chi, I believe Chicago State, one of the places was, um, Prairie State, and Purdue Northwest Field. Plus, yesterday, they had their tournament round, where the, the two best teams played in the final game. Um, now, on a personal note, my grandson plays on a team of all eighth graders, and they competed in this tournament against sophomores, and they finished second in the tournament. And, uh, that being said, I also wanna congratulate all the high schools in the area that won state championships, or competed in championship games over the, this weekend. I think it was Andran won a state championship, Valparaiso did, Hanover Central did, and I believe Couch was a runner-up, and I think that's just a testament to how well the baseball programs are doing in not only Hammond, but Lake County. But, uh, it was quite impressive seeing a group of eighth graders playing sophomores from the Chicago White Sox Institute, and believe me, this team from the Chicago White Sox Institute, a four, uh, of 16-year-olds could beat the Chicago White Sox.
Shame on you.
Oh, whatever. That being said, anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business?
Mr. President.
Councilman Tyler.
I just wanted to share that, uh, the Hamahai Wildcat family lost, uh, beloved coach and mentor recently. Uh, Coach, uh, we, everybody called him chief, but his name was James Brown, passed away. Um, he was a basketball coach, a football coach, and a track coach, uh, and of course a teacher at Hamahai too, so, I just wanna give my condolences to his family, and also share that the, um, the funeral will be this Saturday, the 28th. Visitation is from 9 to 11, uh, and the service will begin at 11:00 at Life Renewed Harvest Ministries, which is at 505 West Ridge Road in Gary. Um, the family is asking for anyone who would like to, to, to wear purple and white to represent Coach Brown. Um, and just on a personal note, he was a, uh, he was a mentor of mine, of course, a coach, I might not play two sports for him, um, but he just taught me a lot about life, and, and once he found out, uh, some things going on with me at that time, he really poured life into me and supported me, uh, through some of those, uh, teenage challenges. So, just wanna give, once again, my condolences to his family and everybody that was impacted by him. His legacy will live on, and I think the entire Hammond community i- is better off for his service to our city. So, just wanted to share that information. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else have anything on the new and unfinished business? Hearing, none. New and unfinished business is closed. Item, the last item, public expression, George Steyer.
George Steyer, Robertsdale. Yeah, I'm, I'm curious as to what's going on with item number 11? You guys didn't discuss anything? You're gonna grant a waiver of non-compliance, uh, for a tax abatement? What gives? And then, we're gonna have a public hearing on it in July, and what, we're gonna, duh, gonna come up here and you're gonna get a, gonna get it passed, 'cause no one knows what the hell's going on? What's going on here? You guys don't discuss anything! Who is this, Don Trump? Uh, government here, or what? Supposed to be democratic in its orientation. We don't know a damn thing of what's going on here. Why you granting the variance with a waiver? You guys grant them a ta, you're giving so many tax breaks and abatements in this city of late? Personal property, real property? My God, all you're doing is burdening the, the populace even more. We can't even get, we can't even, we don't even know why! So, how's anybody gonna comment on it?
Thank you, George. Next speaker is Dwayne Lewis.
Hello. Uh, thank you for having me, uh, councilmen, members of the council. Uh, I just moved here in Hammond not too long ago. Uh, I'm the CFO of, uh, LDC Delivery and Disposal. Uh, the issue I have today is, um, I had, uh, came to here to City Hall to, uh, purchase a license, and I'm aware of the license fee, uh, $100 plus the $5 fee, or whatever, it's up to $105, but, uh, by me coming in, I guess at the end of the, you know, the licensing year, uh, they, um, uh, informed me that I had to pay a double fee, and I looked that up, the ordinance is that, you know, you charge one fee per year, and it wasn't no double fee. I mean, they didn't tell me that the year was ending, they didn't tell me that, you know, I would have to pay a double fee. I was only, uh, told I had to pay the double fee once I was, you know, here to pay the one fee, and then they told me I had to pay two fees. And they told, eh, eh, well, that's, that's my problem. Um, is there some kind of, like, pro-rate fee that they have? You know, I didn't look it up nowhere in the ordinance that, you know, I'm being, uh, charged twice for something that, that's ordinance to charge once for, you know, people that's obtained licenses. I just wanted to know if it was there, something that can, you know, I can be, you know, compensated on that, because I feel like, you know, buying two licenses within a year, I, I feel like that's a little too much. And then they started tacking on like a, a late fee on top of that, if I can, you know, add that to that, so, I really thought that was, um, something that they can look into. I, I just thought it was more like of an administrative practice than an ordinance, and, um, that, that was just basically it. I, I was being charged twice, I just wanted to bring that to light.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman. Oh, man, we need a new battery. Um, Anthony Higgs is the next speaker.
Yes, um, first and foremost, I'd like to say thank you to those individuals and me and the community coming together for Father's Day at MLK Park. It was a huge success. Henry Clark led the effort, and there was over 600 people that we fed throughout the community. So, I would like to say thank you. Hopefully, in the near future, the councilmen at large and, uh, the mayor and some other people can get involved in that process. Secondly, uh, I didn't get an answer to 2512, so I'm still at limbo how it's gonna affect the growth of the city of Hammond. Thirdly, um, there is an opening this week for Tooties, and we had a grand opening, which was a huge success on Saturday, but there, the city is being involved. I don't know if you guys are in, uh, been notified, but I would hope the council people at large would be there on behalf of this business that's expanding, and it's the first black-owned business in the city of Hammond in probably about 10 years. So, I'm praying to God that this business is successful within the third district and that you all can attend their opening this week. I don't know why it wasn't mentioned, I have no idea, but, and thirdly, I applaud the efforts of those individuals concerning trees within the community, and Harrison Park especially. So, in saying that, I can go on and on, but thank you all for your time, and have a blessed evening.
Thank you. The last speaker is Mary Sh- Jones? Is that close enough, or Scoons?
Jones.
Jones, huh?
Hi, thank you. I, I was here, here last week, or, excuse me, at the last meeting, and I wanted to, uh, thank, uh, my councilwoman, uh, Kowinski, for asking questions about the AA data center. Uh, he was the only one to do so, and, uh, but I, and I think that all of us should treat this proposed project with a great deal more skepticism. Uh, not only are AI data centers, uh, run through a lot of electricity, they also consume a lot of water. An AI data center can consume up to 5 million gallons of water per day. Many of that water is treated with chemicals that make it unusable for drinking. So, we really need to be skeptical about what's going on, particularly, um, I guess if this company is offering 25 million, uh, what percent, you know, what percentage of that is, is worthy? AI data centers, once they're installed and put in place, need about 10% of the workers that are originally hired to, uh, to, to staff the, the, they, uh, to staff the building. 90% of it goes away after the initial construction. So, and then if we're putting the, given this company a tax break on top of that, like, what are we doing? I mean, this is serious. I mean, we can't, uh, we're talking about our groundwater, and that's something that we should be very skeptical of, and talk to outside experts and people that are not attached, uh, to Mayor McDermott's interests. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, entertaining motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion's been made, seconded. Motion's been made, um, all those in favor signify by-